Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 6th meeting of the Clay County Planning and Zoning Commission. Roll call.
Terry Griffin.
Present.
David Rotis.
Present.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
Brad Scarlett. Jerry Nolte.
Here.
Tom Decker.
Present.
Randall Morris. Mark Beggs.
Present.
A few housekeeping items before we get started. The meeting tonight is being recorded and it will be transcribed later. So we ask every time that you speak, you approach the podium, give your name and address, and then you can make your comments. That helps whoever's transcribing this use your keep track of who's talking. Even though you may come up and speak multiple times, sorry about that, it helps the transcriber keep track of who's saying what and when. So we just, even though we can see it's the same person, it definitely helps when they transcribe that. So if you would just, every time you come to the podium, state your name and address, and that'll help keep the record straight. Format of the tonight's meeting, I don't know if you've been to these meetings before, but we'll introduce each case, we'll give a short summary of what the case is about, the staff will give their report, we'll then ask the applicant to step forward, see if they had any questions regarding what the staff has reported, make sure they agree with any conditions that the staff has mentioned. We'll then ask if there are any general questions from the audience on the applicant or the application. Well, then we'll ask for anyone that's in favor of the application, they can come forward and make comments. After they're done, then we'll have the opposition come up if they have any comments they want to make. We'll give the applicant one last chance to come up after everyone spoke. Answer any questions that were brought up during those comments. After that, we will close the floor for public comment. The commission will discuss the application, and then we'll vote. So that's kind of the format of each case as we go through. With that, we're going to go through our regular agenda. Our first item is approval of the June 4th, 2024 minutes.
I'll call for a motion to approve the June 24th meeting minutes as presented, August 6th meeting, I'm sorry.
Have a second?
Second.
Vote?
Tom Decker.
Prove.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our first case tonight is case number August 24-109RZ-F. This is a request for rezoning from residential low-density R1A district to residential ranchette R5 district with an agricultural land preservation, ALP, preservation overlay district, POD, and a final plat approval for the proposed subdivision Weber Acres Replat located approximately 17311 C Highway. The applicants are Chris, Pamela, Casper, and Helen Weber, representing Casper and Helen Weber Trust.
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add the staff report is part of the official record.
So be it.
All right, so this is for the proposed replat of Weber Acres. Currently, the property is 22 acres. It's platted, it was platted back in 1994. It has one of our older zonings, which is the residential low-density or R1A zoning. There's currently two parcels, one with an existing house, and then the larger parcel is currently just an hay field. It has access from C Highway and 172nd Street. The proposal is to subdivide the 22 acres into three lots. Like I said, currently it's two lots, but they're wanting to divide it into three to allow for new areas for their children to build. All lots, all three lots will be zoned residential ranchette or R5. They will include an agricultural land preservation. And again, the existing house will continue to have the access from C Highway, and the other two lots would have access off 172nd Street. This proposal falls under the natural resources tier of the Clay County 2008 comprehensive plan, which allows for one unit per 20 acres, there's an exception to that 20-acre minimum being five-plus acres with an agricultural land preservation. Staff believes that this proposal is compliant with our 2008 comprehensive plan. On your screen is our standard rezoning criteria we go over with any of our rezoning cases. It is also attached to your staff report, and staff does believe that they have met this rezoning criteria. So this is your surrounding area. Highlighted there in red is the subject parcel. You can see Smithville Lake kind of to that northwest, and then some other agricultural land, and there's some sporadic R5 zonings, a little bit smaller rural residential lots. Staff has not received opposition leading up to this meeting. We have published this in the newspaper, we posted a rezoning sign out on the site, and then we sent letters at this time with any property within 1,000 feet, letters that were in a total of 11 that we'd sent. We have not received any objections from outside agencies, and they've gotten all their necessary Staff is recommending approval with one condition, which is changes to recording copies of the plat. And it's also important to note that this case can be approved or denied by this commission. It will not be forwarded to the county commission unless there is a formal appeal through our office. Staff would be happy to answer any questions commissioners might have, and the applicant is present.
Any questions for the commission, from the commission? Thank you. So does the applicant have a representative here this evening?
Yes.
Very good. Step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Chris Weber, 17311 County Road C, Kearney, Missouri.
Okay. Do you understand the report what staff made? Are you in agreement with the staff's report?
Yes.
Okay. You have anything you want to add?
No.
Okay, very good, thank you. Are there any general questions on the applicant or the application? Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application? Anyone want to speak in opposition to the application? Very good. Okay, I'm going to close the floor for public comment. Any comments from the commission or questions, staff or the applicant?
I have none.
Okay. I will entertain a motion. This is for the rezoning from residential low-density R1A district to residential ranchette with an agricultural land preservation overlay district and a preservation overlay district.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of Weber Acres Replat as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the commission on the motion? Vote please.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So the next item would be the final plat. Does the staff want to have additional report for the final plat?
No, sir.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plat of the proposed subdivision Weber Acres Replat, and there are conditions shown in Exhibit A. Should we read through those exceptions?
We can if the board would like to hear those.
Okay. Maybe we should have the applicant come forward one more time, state your name and address for the record.
Chris Weber, 17311 County Road C, Kearney, Missouri.
So the staff had exceptions or conditions for the final plat?
Yes.
There are, one, two, there's nine of them? Are you familiar with those?
Yes.
Okay, and you're, you're, you accept those?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. So did we get a motion, or was there a motion? Kind of lost where we were. No motion?
I don't think so, not yet.
Okay. So I will accept a motion to approve the final plat of the proposed subdivision Weber Acres Replat with the conditions shown in Exhibit A.
I would make a motion to approve the final plat of Weber Acres Replat as stated by Mr. Beggs.
Have a second?
Second.
Vote please.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So our second case tonight is case number August 24-110CUP. This is a request for the approval of a conditional use permit to operate a shooting range on agricultural district zone property located at approximately 16616 Northeast 116th Street. The applicant is the Clay County Sheriff's Office. Staff report.
Yes, Chairman, I would like to add the staff report is part of the official record.
So be it.
So, as the chairman said, this is a request for a conditional use permit. I'm showing you the Clay County Highway Department, or actually now it's been rebranded as the Road and Bridge Department, and I'm going to show you, so that's the outline of that area. It's approximately 91 acres, it's unplatted, it is zoned agricultural. It has access from 116th Street to the south, and 33 Highway is a quarter mile to the east. And where that blue rectangle is, is approximately the site location of the proposed structure. So it'll be kind of on the south side with access off of 116th Street. Again, the request is for a conditional use permit for an indoor range, there would be no public use. I'll show you a layout of the structure, and I know the sheriff will touch much more on the details about the use of the building and items like that. It does include a parking lot and a berm and landscaping to buffer the area and help it mix into the surrounding area. But this is the parking lot here, this is the structure itself. The shooting range is up towards the north end with the classroom and multipurpose room to the south end. So here's a little bit more detailed layout, you can see the building's cut in half. Again, the 10-lane firing range will be on the north of the building, you can see some offices, kitchen break area, restrooms, this is the multipurpose room there, and the classroom, and some ancillary storage rooms along with the shooting range. Want to show you the surrounding area so you get an idea of where this is at. The blue is the subject parcel. 33 Highway is located to the east, and then we are right in between Liberty and Kearney, that is Kearney city limits to the north, and Liberty city limits to the south. And this area is a mix of, you know, the light green is ag zoning, so there still is some ag zoning in this area, but everything that is either pink, orange, or yellow is a residential zoning district. Holmes Creek Hills is the subdivision right to the north of the highway department, but there are a lot of small, you know, three to five acre, even smaller lots, mixed in with the ag zoning in this area. So let's talk about comprehensive plan and land development code a little bit. This is located in the urban services tier for the comp plan because it is so close to those city limits. So with that, we reach out to every city within a mile and a half. We reached out to Kearney and Liberty in this case. Liberty came back with a couple comments that we addressed with conditions, basically just wanting some placards placed on storage areas. Kearney did not respond with any comments. The land development code, so this is kind of a unique structure, so land development code has a use table as part of Chapter 6 that tells every type of use that's allowed in each zoning district. Safety services, which are buildings associated with like fire, EMS, sheriff's office, are permitted by right in every zoning district. However, this includes a shooting range, and the use table has a shooting range listed in the use table, which requires the conditional use permit. So if this building did not include the shooting range, it would be permitted by right, and the conditional use permit would not be required. But since it does have that shooting range, the CUP is required, and these are the six criteria that were included in your packet that go along with every conditional use permit. Staff believes these have been addressed by the sheriff's office. So some additional information, sheriff's office held an informational meeting for the neighbors in April. We sent a total of 71 letters for this case, published it in the newspaper, and posted a sign on site, and we did not receive any objections from the outside agencies, which include Road and Bridge, Health Center, the Fire District, and the Water District. Staff is recommending approval with nine conditions. Just a couple highlights, it's the length of the CUP, 25 years. We would need final approval from the Health Department on the septic system, and then with any CUP, it can be revoked at any time for violations to the land development code, and any changes deemed significant by planning and zoning staff would require the CUP to be updated. With that, staff is happy to answer any questions the board members have, and I know the sheriff can provide additional details as well.
Any questions for staff and the commission? Thank you. This is the representative of the applicant, I assume?
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. Will Aiken, Clay County Sheriff. We've been working on this for a while now, and we learned a lot of lessons the first time that we attempted to build this facility out off of Steel House Road. So we've taken all that information and working with the county, working with planning and zoning to determine a proper site, but also trying to figure out how we can make this to still accomplish the sheriff's office needs for training. And rather than pursue an outdoor range, we decided that it only makes sense to do an indoor range. That addresses all the sound complaints, the issues that were brought up before about where the rounds are going to go and such. So we came up with this design on 116th Street on county property. Again, the range itself is going to be indoor, we're not going to do any kind of outdoor range facility at this site. This will also help us achieve our training goals and the things that are required by state and by federal standards, because we'll have a classroom, as well as a multipurpose room where we intend on using augmented reality and virtual reality in there. So we'll be able to take multiple functional areas of where we do training at and incorporate it into a scenario-based situation. So that's where we landed. Going to April, rather than letting the residents around this site figure out from planning and zoning when the letters were mailed out, we took it upon ourselves to reach out to as many of the residents surrounding this site, all four cardinal directions, and we had a town hall meeting. And I think it's a productive town hall meeting, there were some valid concerns that were brought up, and I think we did the best that we could with the information that we had. I mean, there was very specific questions about real estate and stuff like that, there was no way I could answer those questions. So we took that information. After that town hall meeting, I made myself available, my staff available, to include Captain Brian Sapp, and just we gave out our information, said if you have any questions beyond this point, let us know. But we also afforded the attendees the ability to reach out to us and say, hey, keep us informed on your progress. And so as much as we could, we would keep them informed, to include letting them know that this meeting was being held tonight. And I do see some of the people who attended that meeting in April, they're here this evening, so the questions that they had there, hopefully they'll be able to ask here and get some answers that I wasn't able to provide. But in addition to what Kip has already presented, I'll just open it up for questions.
Questions from the commission?
I've reviewed your, the applicant that staff put together, or the application and your business plan, and I think you've done a good job to support your, advocate your application, and it looks good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So what were the major concerns? I assume noise, safety were probably the biggest, bigger concerns.
Yeah, the increased traffic on 116th, but what we tried to explain was, we're not going to be holding massive events here. I mean, the parking lot, I don't remember the exact spaces, but our classroom can only fit about 55 people the way it stands right now, and even on days where we'll be able to fill 55 seats, we're going to have to tell the participating agencies, carpool, because we don't have enough parking spaces for you to drive all over here. Now, there might be one or two events that are going to be coordinated and planned with multiple other agencies, to where we would hold a training session that would be on a much larger scale, but even in those situations, we plan on being good neighbors, and we'll let the neighbors know, this is what we're doing, this is what we're planning on doing, so that way there's not any added, any more traffic than what they're going to see. On any given day, especially for firearms training with, you know, when it comes to the range, it's going to be sporadic. The sheriff's office, I can't afford to send 50 people to training on one day. I only have 150 deputies, and a lot of them have vacations, days off, shift work and such. So it's, we're going to see a little bit of additional traffic, but it's not going to be a main thoroughfare. For most people that come to our training facility, they're going to be taking 69 to 33. They're not going to know how to get back through the other roads, through what we call the back way. So we're not going to see it as much coming from the other direction, so it's going to primarily be coming from 33. So that was one of the concerns. Some other issues came up, like building up the area with sidewalks, we talked about broadband, and of course, as any property owner, when something like this goes in, the question is, what's going to happen to my property value? Those are questions I couldn't answer. I don't know how that works. Other than that, I think that's pretty much it, and of course, if anything has come up since then, as the neighbors have had the opportunity or the chance to think about, you know, what are some of the other concerns, I hope they are able to bring that up tonight.
So what are your annual training requirements for your 150 officers you have? Is it annually, like once annually? Is it?
Yes, so we have 24 hours. Now, keep in mind, this is basic minimum required by the state. 24 hours a year, 72 hours every three years. In that timeframe, we have to have at least two hours of firearms training every year. It gets, it has gotten significantly more difficult to acquire range time from the available ranges in the area, and sometimes we can't always get our employees out at the range, so then, you know, when we still have 20 people left over who couldn't make range days, then we find ourselves scrambling. And we're not the only ones. That's the reason why we want to be good partners with our municipal agencies as well, because they're in the same boat. And so that's why we have, that's why we have to have at least an indoor range.
So if you're 24 hours, only two of that's range time?
Yes.
And so, could you use a scenario-based training? Does that, does that count?
No.
Okay.
No, so we can, we can break it up for one hour quote-unquote classroom time, but one hour has to be on the range. But I'll tell you, carrying a firearm on your side is a massive responsibility, and we see in incidents all across the country all the time about what happens when an agency or an officer or deputy isn't trained the way they're supposed to, and they end up having to use that firearm. The first thing that the defense goes after is training records. The reality is, the state only requires us to have one hour of training. Now, fortunately, I've been behind some type of weapons platform for the last 30 years. It's given me the advantage, but we have brand-new employees coming in who sometimes have never shot a gun, a pistol, and we're only required to give them an hour of continuing education after the academy? That's simply not enough. That's why it's so important for us. Our biggest responsibility is on our hip. Now, we can, we can do everything else that's required of us, racial profiling, de-escalation, and all the 21 other hourly requirements as far as continued education. And I hate to bring this up, but you know, CNN said it best on Twitter, back when it was Twitter. A hairdresser gets 1,500 hours of training time, we only are required 700 hours before we carry everything around our belt. We have to have the training hours, and we can't just go by the minimums.
So are you, are you thinking, I'm thinking of traffic now, so, but you're only going to be coming off of 33, and it's what, a quarter mile from 33 to your front door roughly?
Looks about right, maybe a little bit more.
So you're talking about increasing training beyond the 24?
Yes.
So if you took eight-hour days, you're at three at the minimum, so each one of your rosters would have to be out there three times in a year?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for the commission? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there any general questions from the audience on the application? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Jeffrey Smith, 16221 Northeast 116th Street. So the shooting range is right across on a vacant field from my parcel. Now, I have two questions. One is, when I saw the plot plan, it looked like the access to the range was off 116th Street leading directly to the parking lot. Now I'm hearing access is off 33. Could I get that clarified, please?
Yeah, staff. Yeah, so the driveway, the access is off 116th Street. So the driveway will come off 116th Street.
Did I misunderstand when the sheriff said it was coming off 33?
Yes.
Because there is no access off 33.
Yes, I believe, I believe the sheriff said that most traffic would come from 33 and 69 Highway and not take the backroads to get to the, to the site. But obviously, they would have to access 116th Street as well.
Okay, and is that considered a backroad?
Well, I think there, he was thinking about coming to the property from the west as opposed to coming from 33, going down 33, turn on 116. So I think that was the point, is there wouldn't be traffic coming from the west on 116.
Okay, so all traffic will have to come down 116th Street?
From the, I'm not saying it all would, it's not a requirement, we're just saying a majority of that traffic is going to come down 33 and then go west on 116, so that traffic wouldn't be coming.
But isn't that the only way to access this particular thing?
They could come in from the east or west.
You'd come down.
One way or the other.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Go ahead.
You have to come in from the east or west, one way or the other, because 116th runs east and west.
Okay.
Oh, from the trailer court and come around?
Right, if you came around that backside, yeah, that's what, yeah.
I misunderstood, I thought you were coming off 33 directly to get to the site.
No, no, accessing 116th from 33.
Okay. Second question is, will there be shooting in the evening, or is this limited to certain hours, days of the week?
They are limited, and the business plan, I'll let staff address that, there is a business plan that states hours of operation?
Yeah, and I don't, Chairman, I don't have those hours in front of me, and I should.
Let me go, I think I can find it here.
I should have, I should have added when I did the report that that shooting range section, I included that in your staff report, but that is geared towards outdoor shooting ranges, so that's why I did not go over the, the, some of those items, because it really is geared toward outdoor shooting ranges. So the sheriff's department has imposed hours on it, but I don't think the land development code really does.
I'll clarify for it. The business plan says 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday.
Okay.
But you have to understand there are 24/7, sheriff's office is a 24/7 operation.
Right.
...operation. So there may be times, it may be as early as 6:00 AM or as late as 10:00 PM.
Okay.
So depending on when they can get, I assume they want the flexibility to get officers in there in their off time.
During that time, from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM? But normally, normal business hours, five days-
Eight to five, Monday through Friday, yes.
And then what about on the weekend? Also, access?
That was based on appointment only, so they would do weekends as appointment only.
Yeah.
Now, second, I'm hearing about the business plan. As a resident, I did attend the meeting that the sheriff had, which was great, and we were told things would be coming. The only thing that I got was this meeting. So we were here to learn for the first time. So if there was a copy of the business plan, was that made available to the public?
Yes, so that's po-, been posted on the website for about a week now.
Okay. Um, I, I, for some reason, I did not hear that that business plan was available. Is that correct, Sheriff?
That's correct.
So we, as people that attended that public notice meeting, were told we would be kept informed. So now, for the first time, I'm hearing specifics. May I request that we postpone this hearing on, or the decision on this hearing so that we, the neighbors, can all have a chance to review the business plan, make, uh, objective decisions on something that you've put forth and that you are considering?
So we'll take that into consideration. Is there something specific that you would object to, other than normal operating hours?
What, what, that was the question because I didn't know what the operating hours were gonna be.
So it's gonna be, like we said, Monday through Friday, eight to five?
I, I heard you. Second question is, for the location, can't it be put behind, there's a tree line that the county owns, can't it be, the facility be installed behind the tree line and farther set back from 116th Street? That was a question we asked, uh, at the public hearing that we had with the sheriff. I haven't heard an answer to that either.
Okay, and I don't know how they cited it. What is the concern? Why would you wanna set it back further? What is the, what would that help alleviate as far as your concerns are?
Um, visibility. Uh, we have children that are in the area, so it's just pushing something that's inherently, not dangerous, I don't wanna use that word, but not a normal, uh, event that you're having a, a restaurant or something. So it's just moving it farther back to sea. Second question that we asked at the public meeting was, could the access road be shifted from off 116th Street to the road that now goes into the Public Works Garage, which street is now used when they, when the sheriffs gas up their vehicles? And I haven't heard an answer to that either.
I'll let the sheriff answer that when he comes back up after the questions are. So are there, so are there any other general questions about the application?
Got it.
Please, step forward.
Clarification?
Uh, you'll need to step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paul Levine. I live at 11423 Chandler Road, just around the corner from where they're planning on building it.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name. What is it?
Levine, L-A-V-I-N-E.
Okay, thank you.
And my, my, I just want a clarification. Uh, it, it's gonna come, um, you said the, the shortest distance to the facility would be going down, uh, to 33 to 116th Street. And, uh, it says on this map here, um, it, it turns in off of, uh, McGinnis Road.
And Chairman, can I address that?
Sure.
So when you pulled up, when you pull up the highway department on Google Maps, for some reason, it labels 116th Street as McGinnis Road. And so when the architect initially did these plans, they just pulled McGinnis Road. But it is 116th Street, the access is from 116th Street and only 116th Street.
Oh, okay, okay. I understand now because, uh, I was, I was, um, under the impression, just at this meeting right now, that maybe McGinnis Road was that access road to the Clay County Maintenance and then they're gonna cut a road going down to it, you know, because, but that, I understand now. Just 116th Street and McGinnis are the same roads.
Okay.
That is a bit confusing, sorry.
Yeah, just a clarification, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Any other general comments? There being none, I'll ask if there's anyone that wants to make comments opposing the application. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ross Schrever, 16419 Northeast 116th Street. On your map, my driveway is the first driveway west of where they're at, on the other side of the road. I thought about coming up during general comments, but I didn't wanna fall into the category of being against or not. The night we had the meeting, there was press invited, I checked on it, they were invited to come see where this was going to be in rural Carney, Missouri. You saw from the map, Carney's about four and a half miles north of it, we're here. I also told them it was gonna be on McGinnis Road, I understand that now. We, we're not rural Carney, we're Liberty. I'll bet if you'd have put Liberty on there, you'd have had a lot more people out here complaining about it. So I don't think it was, excuse me, completely fair the way it was brought up. Secondly, we were told that the original proposition out towards Mosby, they didn't want the outdoor shooting range. It's more isolated. There's like five houses within a half a mile of that place. Why don't you do this facility out there where there's nobody? We also live on very narrow road, we've talked about that. In the last week, my wife and I, we drive out that road all the time. As we go out towards the trailer court, you get off of 69, you come up on a little S-turn over a hill and down. We were almost hit by a sheriff's department vehicle coming up that way as he came in and cut that corner like everybody does. I had to actually drive off the road. Coming the other way, we've had county trucks that come over that hill at an extreme round of speed, way over the speed limit. Not the big trucks, but the smaller management trucks. We have children that live there, we have, we have kids that come driving up and down there. That road is not very well protected as far as speeders. When we built our house, we were required to have our driveway 300 feet from the top of the hill. This driveway is not 300 feet from the top of the hill. I suspect those rules have changed, I don't know. So we've got a couple of things that I hope are not being made examples of for this, are being, being, conditions that are being met because of this. When we had the meeting, I offered to walk the property with them. The ground behind that tree line is solid rock robbed. 97 acres, why does it have to be on the road? Let's think about that logically for a second. 97 acres, you're gonna move up to where the rich people live on the hill, they're gonna really complain, but somewhere in between, they burn trash out there on this spot, they can move their trash burning area. The driveway, why put another driveway in when you've got one there that would be able to access this thing? You know, when the old county home was there, you know, I don't know if any of you were here when the old county home was out there, but it was a big old rock building out there. The sheriff's office came out there to fill up with gas and they had a guy that was out there that maintained that for them. They used it for the SWAT team to practice. So we've had the situation in the past. Now, this, I can't guarantee this happened, but we were left on vacation, came back and that building was down in three weeks. And I talked to one of the people that worked over there and he said, oh yeah, they just dug a hole and buried it. That building was so full of asbestos. So you may have an asbestos problem under you. I don't know that, but just going out from hearsay. Finally, I asked, I offered to use my property for them to set up a radar screen so they could see what the average traffic was, speeding, doing, nothing. I gave you my email address, my phone number, and nothing happened. They told us they were gonna put traffic counters out. It hasn't happened. So there's some things that they told us that would happen. I asked that somebody look at that property, 97 acres and you're gonna put it on the road? Now, property values, I'm worried about that, I'll be honest with you. There should be some other people out here. We have a guy that's a fam-, a people that just bought the property next to us and they spent a million dollars remodeling that thing. They ought to be very upset about this thing going across from a house that they're gonna try and sell for a mil-, over a million dollars. I mean, think about it if it, you, was you, your people. 97 acres and you want to put it on the roadway and you want to put a new driveway in at the top of, or just over the top of a hill? I think it can go there. I'm not a, worried about it. I think it's a great place for it. We've had sheriff's officers coming out there forever because that's where they gas now. But let's get it off the road. Further back, there's gotta be a way to do it on 97 acres. Thank you.
So I'll ask you the same question I asked the other, uh, Mr. Smith. So we're moving off the road, what, what is, what do you think you're gonna, what's the objective or what's the, what are you trying to accomplish by spacing it off? Is it visual, is it sound?
It's, it's, oh, sound, I'm not worried about the sound. I mean, you know, people shoot in the countryside all the time. I wouldn't even be worried about the outside, me personally, outside shooting range. But I understand that situation. It's visual effect, it's property value, which is a real thing for us. Uh, it's the traffic coming in a new driveway. Uh, you know, there's just some little things. You've got two driveways. You've got the one that's right next to it, already there, that goes right down past the, the little, uh, pavilion back there. You've got the one going into the county barns, that they can take it right down into where they burn the trash right now. There's a lot of other option, uh, it seems obvious observations. And check the traffic before you make these kind of decisions. The original plans we saw, which are the same ones, except the parking lot was not shown, we were told there wouldn't be very many more parking spots like that, but they made it two and a half times bigger, so they're expecting more people than we thought they were. Uh, just little things. I, I'm all for the, the thing. I have no problem with it being on that property. Change the traffic pattern, make it safer. That's all I ask.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else that wants to make or have comments opposing the application? Please. You would state your name and address for the record.
My name is Merlene Schrever and I am Ross Schrever's wife and I live there also. And that's a very dangerous hill to have a driveway. Because if a teenage driver came flying down that hill and there was a two or three, a car or two, that could be a very bad accident. And I'm very concerned also for the children in the, that live right there with that extra, extra, um, traffic. But that, that hill is, is dangerous to have a driveway at the bottom of it and it needs to be checked. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, step forward and again, state your name and address.
Ross Schrever, 16419 Northeast 116th Street. About a week ago, I put the new address in Google from Liberty and it took me down by the trailer court. So you can expect people that are coming in are gonna be using that road a lot, so just something.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment opposing? Please.
Do I have to tell you my address?
Sure, please.
11423 Chandler Road, Carney, Missouri, 64060. Okay, the one comment I would like to make is, the, the access roads that come in off of 33 and 69, especially 69. At 33, uh, there is a hill there and it, it can be, uh, somewhat hazardous at times when people park on the side of the road, there's, a house has been developed there. It's, it, it can be a little bit hazardous. But if you come in off of Chandler Road by the, uh, trailer park and, and this is probably more of a Liberty problem right there, that that road is in terrible shape. I don't know if you guys have been that way?
I have, yeah.
How about 112th Street at 33's, you know, is that a county road?
As far as I know, that is.
No.
Well, boy, the county's doing a terrible job keeping that road up.
No, that, excuse me, that is, uh, City of Liberty Road. That's the City of Li-, that road belongs to the City of Liberty, not to Clay County.
Liberty, that's Liberty Road, okay.
Yeah.
Well, they do a terrible job. I'm just, uh, wanting to see, uh, if the, the roads are gonna be maintained, uh, maybe a little bit more judiciously, better, uh, in the future if this goes through. Because, uh, for right now, um, trying to get in and out of there is somewhat hazardous. So just, just a point, you know, I think you ought to take into consideration.
Can't promise anything, but I know when I lived in the city, when we had a city councilman move in our block, all of a sudden, our streets got, where they first get cleared in the, in the snow. I don't know if this is the case here, but, yeah. Any other comments opposing the application? Okay, I'm gonna close the floor for opposition comments. Is there any comments for the application? I'm gonna close the floor for public comment for the application if we'd have the sheriff come back up. State your name.
Will Aiken, Clay County Sheriff. Um, first, I wanna start by saying I apologize to the residents for not getting the business plan to them. Uh, I did explain to them that I'm, I'm extremely busy, uh, and they would have to give me some grace in getting some, some information to them. Um, we had some, two significant incidents happen in Clay County that we've been involved with over the last week and there was no way I was gonna get to that. So I apologize for not being able to send that. Uh, you know, the, the most important thing here this time in this effort was to try to be as transparent as possible. Um, as far as, uh, and I left my paper in the corner, so I wasn't able to take notes with, uh, some of the things that were brought up. But, uh, we did, I think we talked about it real briefly, about having access, uh, going down the existing driveway, but then coming back. But what limits us is our budget. And if, if I remember correctly, in order to build the road out that goes by the pond, it's, it's gonna take a significant amount of money, which that's what we need to build the facility. So when, when talking with the team and the architects, the, it just makes more sense financially to do it right off the road. Um, let's see.
And I, I can address a couple of the items. Um, I've been part of the, the, some of the planning meetings for this, this structure. And I can tell you, the county is dedicated to making this aesthetically pleasing, more of a residential look than a commercial look. Um, I mentioned the berman landscaping, um, that is part of the plan to, uh, obstruct the view from the 116th Street as you're driving by. Um, and we have also heard the rumor about the house being buried, so we checked with Road and Bridge Department. That is not the case. They, they indicate that that, that structure was removed from the property, so that is not an issue. And then for the, the residents that are here tonight, uh, please reach out to the Planning and Zoning Department and we will get you all the reports, all the business plans, everything that you need, um, associated with this project. So please, uh, you know, I, I wanna encourage them to reach out to us. So I just wanted to interject that part.
So I was looking at your sheet C102, it's a civil plan for the building? I couldn't quite make out, we have the contours for the building and the PDF, you can't even re-, can't read those elevations. Is that going up or down?
Uh, so it goes, yeah, and that's another reason not to do the, um, that existing driveway and hook on there because it, it falls dramatically from the east to the west.
So you're coming down from the west, leveling up and then building fill back to the east, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Another thing, just for clarifying the entrance into it, we can mitigate, uh, all of our training participants to come in off of 33, 33 to 116th Street. I mentioned 69 because everyone knows 69, 33, 116th. Uh, so in my mind, it just, it's, I was talking like as if everyone knew. But we can mitigate that by saying the directions are- But we can mitigate that by saying the directions are, you will come off of 33 onto 116th to have access to Law Enforcement Resource Center. But that's, you know, in the event that we have deputies over there, real world stuff doesn't stop. And so if we have to respond from there and we have to go west on 116th as opposed to 100, or east, then we're going to have to do our job and get there as quickly as possible. The, so we can mitigate that, the, there was something else I was going to say. Google, Google Maps. We still have people today driving into rivers and lakes and stuff because they follow Google Maps. And so when the gentleman said that this was off of McGuinness, I was like, what? Like, where's that at? It didn't dawn on me that it overlaps and it's the same street. So if people punch it in, into Google, then it could very well take them a different route, but we will do our part and be diligent on explaining, you will come off of 33 to gain access. I wish I could go and make a phone call to Google and say, hey, fix your, your directions, but we all know that that's impossible. So there, there will be times where people do punch it into Google and they're going to be coming into the west or from the west and, and from different directions. We will do our best to try to mitigate that and I apologize. What else was brought up? There was quite a bit of points. Oh, so I don't have that answer because a lot of this had to do with, oh, thank you. The, the distance, I, I don't know who would be able to answer that, but I did want to make a.
We've got someone here.
Okay, yes.
I don't think the exact location of the driveway has actually been sighted at this point. It will be, it will have to follow commercial driveway sight distances in both directions, so it will be, the driveway will be required to be placed far enough from the top of the hill that there is a clear sight distance for stopping, starting, turning, whatever else is needed in and out of that driveway.
And the, the plan is, if it works, to have it across from one that's across the street that has already been approved.
Across from an existing driveway?
Yes.
The other thing.
Is the commercial requirements, are they different than residential?
The sight distances are not any different, but the, the requirements for the width of the driveway and some other things may vary.
So it should work?
Yes. Our, we have been asked to do a preliminary site overview of it and there is plenty of room for a driveway there with safe sight distance, so that should not be a problem.
Another thing that came up was having the vehicle trackers, the things in the roads that track how much traffic came in, so I don't know anything about that. So I, I told the residents that evening that I would have to turn it over to Planning and Zoning or maybe the Roads and Bridges Department because I don't know what the criteria is that would, that, that would be the catalyst to make us put stuff like that out there. So I told them that I would have to come back and I'll own that one too. And quite frankly, I don't even know what the answer is. So I couldn't even give back to them.
Can you put up the architectural drawings? Can you pull those up? Because you may want to speak to the visual aspects of the building.
I don't know. That boy right there is a, can you rotate to properly orientate it to the top of the screen? They need you 180 degrees.
Is that big enough?
Yeah, so there's the top of the mark. Nine, it's dropped about 40 feet pretty quick.
Yeah.
Going to the west. And like Terry mentioned, Kip, that the proposed entrance to the new parking lot is directly across the street from the existing driveway, so. That's more side overview if you were wanting the architectural plans.
Yeah, yeah, you may want to scroll down to the architectural drawings, that A101102 or 201202 shows the elevations of the building. Yeah, keep going, that's, there you go. Thought they may be interested in seeing that.
So the idea, while taking into consideration that we have neighbors across the street, we didn't want the facade to be any bigger than it had to be to accommodate the training room and everything else that had to go into it. So we tried to minimize the road facing aspect of the building and that's the reason why it goes more north-south as opposed to east-west.
And I did notice that you, you put stone on the outside, you put stone on the gable ends, so. Although it's a big building, it looks somewhat residential.
Also think there's a lot of screening and burgling landscaping around the exterior property. Kip already brought up that they're trying to make it as most residential appearance than more of a brand new commercial.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can you, Kip, could you explain what this detail was?
No, I can't because mine didn't come out like that.
I just saw.
Yeah, I don't, mine didn't, mine didn't print that way.
Couldn't break the code of what we do.
It looks like an old Atari game or something.
So with that, I'm going to close the public comment period. Is there a discussion amongst the commission? Any questions for staff? Any unanswered questions from the applicant?
Like I made a comment sort of, I feel like the applicant has surpassed all expectations to produce documentation that supports the application and suits the property. It's a, it's a county-owned facility on county-owned property adjacent to the Road and Bridge Department and I think they've done a jo, a fine job supporting their, their application, so.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Decker. I think it's, it's something that has to be done. I think this plan is, they've tried to minimize the impact just of the surrounding property owners as best they can. So yeah, I would agree with that.
And you might correct me if I'm wrong, Kip, but regardless of what happens in this room tonight, the, anyone in the public audience could always file an appeal. If this was approved, they could have filed appeal to the commission, is that correct?
So since this is a new conditional use permit, it is going to go to County Commission. We are planning on it, if you vote tonight, to go to County Commission on the 15th of this month, which is next Thursday. So they are welcome to come to that meeting, make comments in front of the County Commission if they choose to. Then if anyone is aggrieved by that decision, they could appeal that to Circuit Court.
So that would give the attendees, the public attendees, an opportunity to review the business plan, the application and all that stuff?
They give them roughly 10 days to review that, that's why I would like them.
They could access that on the P&amp;Z's website or they could come to your office and get paper copies.
Yes, the county website or please contact my department and we'd be happy to help them.
Okay.
Before we move any further, I need to have the sheriff step back up to the podium for a minute and again, state your name.
Will Aiken, Clay County Sheriff.
So I forgot to ask you that, are you familiar with the conditions that the staff has attached to the conditional use permit?
Yes.
Okay, and you're in agreement with those?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. With that, I'm open to a motion. If there's no other questions from the commission? Being none, I would be open to a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the indoor shooting range for the Clay County Sheriff's Office with the nine items set out in Exhibit A be attached to the approval.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Oh. For any discussion on the motion? Vote please.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there any other business that we have to discuss?
I just have a couple of comments. The case from last month was just a P&amp;Z approval, approval case, so it has been finalized and recorded, I believe. It was the project off WHB and 92 Highway for the six lots. The County Commission approved a revision to the Land Development Code to change the, the mailings that we do. There's, the simple way to put it is we send at least 25 letters for every case and some cases are required to go out to 1,500 feet, even if that's more than 25. If you have questions about that, catch me on a sidebar. And then the third item is, we received the final version of the comprehensive plan that staff is reviewing currently. That's going to go out for, or be presented to the public in September with the goal of bringing that in front of the County Commission in October and this board in December for final adoption. So we are still working on that. So I will, we will send you a reminder when it's out for public comment so you can review it as well. And I think that's all I have.
Do we have any updates on the second hearing for the AT&amp;T Tower on 148th Street?
I think that's a legal item that probably shouldn't be discussed.
Very well.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Approved.
Okay, for adjourned.
Well, yeah, I think there's reasons for it. It could be topography, the cost of running all the utilities and all the utilities are. Well, I think the county, the county's going to do everything we can to make it aesthetically pleasing, but within the neighborhood. Well then, so I would recommend you.